Okay, let's call the order of the Tuesday, June 26th. All of City Council meeting. Start off with a-
Start off with a roll call to my left.
Brian Schwann, Council member.
Caroline Hale, Council member.
Troy Tabor, Council member.
Ben Lawrence, Mayor.
Clark C.R. Nelson, Council member.
Greg Schneider, Council member.
Mike Warrington, Council member.
Mike Keller, Police Chief.
Donna Davis, Chief Financial Officer.
Chad Russell, Fire Chief.
Jennifer McCosland, Assistant City Administrator.
J.T. Klaus, City Attorney.
Les Mangas, Director Public Works.
Susan Renner, City Clerk.
Mark Deiter, City Administrator.
All right, item three is the invocation. I see Brad out there with, I guess it's grace first now, right? Instead of East Evangelical.
Yes, sir. Let's pray. Father in heaven, we thank you for this day. We recognize you as our God and our Creator and the giver of all good gifts. Thank you for this community. We pray tonight your attendance here that you would bless those who decide and govern. We pray that you would protect our first responders, give them grace and wisdom. And before we celebrate our nation's independence, we thank you for those freedoms as well. We pray that you would protect them, that you would give us all grace, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Do you stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item number five this evening is the public forum. Is there anyone here that wishes to address the council? Seeing none, I will move on to item six, which is the acceptance of the agenda. I see nothing additional here this evening.
Just gave you a new contract for the amphitheater, an amphitheater concert. When was that updated, today or yesterday?
Yeah, today.
And then we gave you a little more-
Leave it a second.
We gave you a little more information on the zoning case.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to accept the agenda as apparently amended.
A second.
All right, motion by C.R., second by Mike, to accept the agenda. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven. I believe we're receiving an award. The city, that is, not you rascals.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name's Sean Stewart. I'm with AAA Kansas. And I am also have been an Andover resident for 14 years. So it's brings gives me a lot of pleasure to be able to present the police department with their seventh consecutive AAA Community Traffic Safety Award and their fourth consecutive Platinum Award, which is the highest level that we bestow on law enforcement agencies. I'd also, I'd first like to introduce Troy Wells. He's with KDOT. He's a law enforcement liaison and works very closely with agencies around the state and helps them apply for these awards. So, thank you, Troy. Andover PD is being recognized for a variety of programs and initiatives that promote traffic safety, including participating in a community-based traffic safety committee, having a departmental policy requiring the use of seat belts, for Andover Speed Program, using radar trailer and pole-mounted radar speed signs to control speed in the city, providing child safety seat inspections and fittings to help parents keep their young kids safe, engaging in selective enforcement programs, especially in school zones for speed violations and high-vehicle collision areas. And for engineering, they worked with the Streets Department to get signage and beacon lights installed at the Red Bud Trail crosswalk across Andover Road. Here's what we see in community traffic statistics. Seat belt use for adults and child passenger safety seats both rose in the most recent years. The SAFE program, which is a seat belt program for students in the high schools, is achieving a 96% seat belt use rate, which is excellent. Accordingly, teen crashes have dropped from 55 in 2015 to 41 in 2016, a 25% drop. And there have been no traffic fatalities in the past five years in Andover. I'd like to thank all of you as city leaders for your support of the police department and the chief and his team and their ability to do great work in traffic safety. So, I'd like to congratulate Chief Keller and the entire police department on the AAA Traffic Safety Award.
I need to have Lieutenant Parker come up. Mickey, you can come up and join us.
We have someone taking a picture?
Yeah.
Okay.
Don't we win?
Look at him first.
Ready?
Who are we looking at?
Ready? One, two, three.
Sure. Real quick, first of all, I want to thank AAA for the support and recognition here, but really I want to thank Lieutenant Parker. Lieutenant Lance Parker is our coordinator for our traffic program. All those things that Sean just said, Lieutenant Parker puts into play. He runs, he is a coordinator for our traffic safety committee that we have. He represents us in the, what's it called? The inner-
Oh, operation.
Operation Impact, which is a metro area program. He also tracks all of our accidents and our traffic data and basically coordinates all of our efforts in traffic enforcement based on those accidents and complaints. So, really, this is Lieutenant Parker's award. Oh, by the way, he also wrote the award up for us to receive it.
All right, we will move on to item number eight, which is the consent agenda. Items 8.1 through 8.7.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda items 8.1 to 8.7 as presented and modified at time of meeting.
Second it.
All right, motion by Greg, second by Mike, to approve the consent agenda. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, item number nine. This is the zoning case 2018-02 regarding 610 South Roof. I will, since we sent this back, do I have to go through all the jazz? Okay. So, I'll ask the council if any of them intend to disqualify themselves from participating in this case because they have a conflict of interest.
No.
All right. Has the city clerk received a protest petition? All right. And the, I asked the council if they've received the draft minutes for the June 22nd, 2018, in the Planning Commission. All right. I'll call the zoning administrator to give us a report of the reboot to the Planning Commission and what happened there and their recommendation.
Last Friday, the Planning Commission met to reconsider this zoning case 2018-02 and specifically to address the findings and factors and, in more particular, the question number 17, that was to summarize all of those findings. And they returned the findings and factors and their recommendation and clarified that question number 17 to show their intent that they feel that the public safety and welfare outweighs the, you know, the harm to the applicant in not approving that zoning case.
What was the, was there a change of information today regarding that? Updated to the packet?
Mr. Mayor, I just added some information on property values, a previous case on Mike Street that I think is pretty much identical to this. I'm sure someone could poke at it, find some differences where we approved a duplex information, I think related to the comprehensive plan, and some information on our police and fire call volumes that was provided by the police chief.
Mark, what about the willingness to reduce it from four to two units?
Mr. Mayor and council, I think we should hear from the applicant whether, I mean, that was the indication he gave on Friday. I don't know if that's still consistent with what he's thinking or not.
Is the applicant here this evening? Do you have any new information you'd like to add or comments you'd like to make? If you do, I'll have you stand up to the podium, please, so everybody can hear.
We, my name's Jim Ackerman and I'm with Eagle Investments. Yes, I did, we did talk Friday and they threw out, would I be willing to just put a single duplex up? And I would be willing to adhere to that if that was something they would consider, so.
I might ask a question. Go ahead and finish and then-
I do have some packets of some information that would show the layout that I'm planning on proposing to put up. If you guys would like to see that.
Gracias.
Thank you. Assuming the top picture is what was there before?
Correct.
You've raised that building?
Correct, yes.
And then the bottom on the front page is something you're proposing to build? Remarked improvement?
Thank you. It'd be a three-bedroom, two-bath duplex on each side where you would have a two-car garage, each tenant would, and they'd be have ample off-street parking. The residences have expressed concern about off-street parking. I would also make it mandatory that my residences know off-street parking, know on-street parking by them, so.
Control that through a lease?
Through the lease, yeah. You know, and I'm estimating this would rent for probably about $1,200 a month. And my ideal tenant there is 55-plus people, somebody sold their house looking not to have a yard to maintain, not want to maintain a house, is the ideal tenant there. And I'd guess they're paying about $1,200 a month is my ballpark. So, it's people that are responsible, that are good neighbors, that are going to take care of the property, which is what I want and what definitely what the neighborhood wants too, so. This is definitely a long-term investment for me, so I need to maintain the property and take care of it over, you know, 10 to 15 years for it to pay off for me. So, it's not a flip situation or a-
Right.
Yeah, so, that type of deal, so. You see the last page there will show the layout of a duplex or two duplexes on that plot of land. And my understanding is that it does fit within the requirements of easements and that type of thing, so.
Bless is it, am I correct, and the Planning Commission still dissented, voted to disapprove? I see the rationale, but I would ask you, sir, do you feel that the Planning Commission was in there by disapproving that? And I want you to be specific.
Based on, well, where I had issue with what they found was that the traffic patterns in the neighborhood and that adding two more residents, well, actually, if it was a single duplex adding one more residence there, is that the tipping point for safety and security of the neighborhood? You know, I don't think adding one more residence there is that tipping point, so. That's what a big concern was that they had expressed and the neighbors had expressed too, so. My opinion is that you have a long, the speed of what people gain by the end of the south part of that street going north to get out on Kellogg, I imagine people going 40, 50 miles an hour by the time they get to the end of that thing, so. Or quite, you know, 40 miles an hour, I would guess. Well, high rate of speed. I mean, I think the neighborhood's speed limit there is probably 25 miles an hour, and they're going much faster than 25 miles an hour. So, that's probably the biggest concern there and the dirt road, so.
Mayor can ask a question. Did you present this as a single duplex to the Planning Commission as well?
I presented both, yes.
I do have a question. There's been talk of the comprehensive plan. Is there a timeframe on that when that would be adopted?
It's been adopted.
It's been adopted.
I think the gray areas where we have delineated certain areas to be multifamily or commercial or single-family residential, that's our goals and our wishes as we, as the city grows. But we're also realistic and we understand that we don't own the property and don't get to choose. We're trying to encourage people to follow that comprehensive plan, the landowners to follow that comprehensive plan, but, you know, city, land and neighborhoods change, and that's typically on about a 20-year cycle. But I do know what you're referencing. In this particular area, in this particular neighborhood, our comprehensive plan indicates that multifamily housing is appropriate. Did the Planning Commission specifically mention that? Did they reference the comprehensive plan at all? I mean, it's a question, but what was their specific answer to that?
There was discussion about the comprehensive plan and that the comprehensive plan is the forever plan and that they felt the timing wasn't right now to begin converting that neighborhood to multifamily as the plan suggests.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple questions. I'm sorry, Troy.
No, I don't care. I have some too, so I don't care who's first. I'd like some clarification. We're going from R1 to R3. So, there are some duplexes there already. Is this spot-zoned? I mean, where there are some duplexes within that neighborhood?
To the north.
Yeah, it's on, is it Clyde? What's the street when you come in?
Clyde Street, Ruth Street, Never-on Street. All north of Clyde Street is two and three-family dwellings, duplexes.
Okay.
Zoned R3.
All right, and this one gets, so they are zoned R3. Does it, does R3 go beyond a duplex? I mean-
R3 would allow up to a four-family dwelling.
Okay. So, could this be changed to just R2 and-
You could put a protective overlay on an R3, limiting the dwelling units.
R2 is single-family dwellings only.
Oh, okay.
That's something we're clarifying in the UDM.
Okay, so R-
So, as the mayor said, the only way you could put any limitations on that R3 zone would be to put a protective overlay on top of the zone that would have more restrictive
I guess, oh, were you done, Caroline?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor and everyone, if we were to allow a duplex and we put a protective overlay on this, I believe the main challenge would be traffic, right? Would be the road. So, if everyone started doing that over the next five years, changing their homes to duplexes, which is what this would essentially start or kick off, I think, we would have to fix the road at some point. I mean, is that a valid assumption?
That's up to you to determine if that's a valid assumption. In this instance, putting, adding one more dwelling unit to that street, I mean, I don't know how many trips a day that'd generate, an additional three or four, probably. What's the average?
Generation rate for attached single-family dwelling is just under 10 trips a day.
10 trips a day.
So, if it were four dwelling units, it would be about 40, between 30, 35 and 40.
Troy, I understand what you're saying. By starting one lot, it could end up being multiple lots. And at some point, that road would have to be improved, and who's going to pay for that? Because it won't just be the road, it'll be the drainage and anything else that's there too. So, and anyone on that road, how we have it now, would be paying 50% of that road improvement.
I don't see this neighborhood switching over to wholesale duplexes. That, you guys got nice houses on, they're not just going to come in and bulldoze and build a duplex. This just happened to be a pretty significant case of neglect. C.R., you had some questions.
I do, thank you, and they're not earth-shattering whatsoever. Number one, I wanted to comment to you what a wonderful thing to do to destroy what was there. You kind of did that assuming that you would get diszoning.
Correct.
But I cannot applaud you enough for doing what you have done. It is, isn't it your agreement or is it your understanding that you are agreeing to a protective overlay if we were to so impose that, so that would be one duplex on the site and not two? It'd be a two-person dwelling unit plus the storage unit, that 30-by-60 storage unit, is that correct?
Correct, yes, I would be one of that.
And I recall that these folks have spoken an awful lot about dust and the traffic and things of that nature. That appears to be a significant issue to them. Do you have any response to the traffic and so forth if you were to be permitted for the duplex?
Well, it'd just be that if I was permitted to add, you're looking at adding one more door on that street on, if you have a duplex versus a single-family house, you know, is that the tipping point for traffic and safety for that street and that neighborhood? I don't think so.
Yeah.
You know, I think the street issue is already significant there with the dust, and that would be, I would, like, I don't know what the process is of paving that street and doing the drainage issues, but I think residents deserve to have those issues taken care of. It would, I would guess, if I was looking to buy a property in that neighborhood, it would increase their property value significantly by doing those improvements.
And I-
Not that, not that I'm looking to buy their properties, which I assume that's taken, but anybody that were to sell their property there is going to, they're going to make money doing that.
I wanted to make sure that the mayor asked you a question about when we sent the matter back to Planning Department, and specifically it was question 17, which was the answer to whether the relative gain to the public health, safety and general welfare outweigh the loss of property value and hardship to you. And that is the one that was decided against your interest, and that's what you disagree with from the Planning to Commission, and that's why it's up here at this point in time. Is that correct?
Correct.
Very good. I have nothing further on that.
Anybody in the council have any further questions of the applicant?
I would just say that I had, I was concerned when it was talking about being a fourplex. Obviously, that neighborhood, what you would do would be, I would think, an improvement to properties. I understand the road situation, but a duplex doesn't give me the same concern that a four-unit would. And I just think you never know, somebody can move into a home that has five cars coming in and out anyway, you just don't know. And duplexes, you could end up with somebody, you don't know. So, I would tend to feel like if we're ready to go to a duplex, that I might be, I would be inclined to support doing the overlay thing and allowing for a duplex to go in here.
Well, let me tell you what your choices are here. Since the, thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Since the Planning Commission voted to disapprove and referenced particular findings and factors, it just takes a majority vote to agree with their recommendation to disapprove. That'd be four votes. If you disagree with their decision, you would actually make a motion to override the Planning Commission and put your protective overlay on it, limit it to two dwelling units. But if you were to do that, I need you to specifically cite and mention the findings and factors you're disagreeing with and state the reasons why you believe they were wrong and that this should be approved.
Are we finished with the public hearing?
We're not required to have a public hearing.
And, Mr. Mayor, any of those actions would require a simple majority only, since it has been returned to the Planning Commission and it's back-
It's not a supermajority to overall-
No, no supermajorities required.
I'm sorry, did the Planning Commission have an additional public hearing or they just considered the matter at the bench?
They did reopen the public hearing and heard from the applicant and opponents.
Mr. Mayor?
Hmm?
I guess I would say that if somebody is going to make a motion that we do override and we talk about the restrictions then that we put on that property, it was brought up perhaps that part of the lease agreement would be that there would be no parking on the road. And while I understand that, I feel like if other homes that are on that road are able and there's no restriction on them, I guess I wouldn't be inclined necessarily to require that to be a requirement, even if he goes ahead and decides that he wants to put that in. I'm just saying, I don't think it's fair to do that if none of the other homes are required to do that.
So, you wouldn't make that, you wouldn't make that part of your protective overlay?
I would-
Anybody can park on the street, any of the other houses.
That's, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I think you heard his desire to limit that and control that through his lease, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't tangle up any particular motion that you guys may make with that caveat. So, assuming the council has all the information they need-
Mr. Mayor-
I'll leave it to you all.
Okay, I guess I'm going to ask one more time, is, are we, is the discussion at the bench, it's not in the public?
Right.
I will tell you my feelings and then may initiate a motion. I believe this gentleman has done everything necessary for the approval of this zoning And specifically, the comprehensive plan and the idea of cleaning up that property is a wonderful thing. And if, in fact, he complies with what he has given us this evening, if I were a neighbor, I would, I'd just say, thank you very much for doing that. I realize there's a difference of opinion on that. With regard to the specifics I'll get into, it has to do with paragraph 17, where the Planning Commission stated that it was the gain to the public health, safety and general welfare outweighed the hardship imposed by the applicant. I would say that that, in my opinion, was in error. And I would suggest that that would be the basis upon which we would support a motion. I also believe that the motion should contain a protective overlay for a duplex only with the storage unit. And I'll leave alone any parking at this stage, and then we'll see how it goes. Based upon that, I would move to approve- Based upon that, I would move to approve a planning.
An override?
I would move to override the decision by the Planning Commission, and approve the, the change of zoning classification from R1 to R3 for 610 South Ruth, with the understanding that it would be for one duplex only, plus the storage unit. And I would do so on the basis of the findings and factors, as stated by the Planning Commission, with the exception of paragraph seventeen. And in my position, paragraph seventeen, it should state that the hardship imposed by the applicant exceeds the detriment to the public health, safety, and general welfare in this particular situation.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, and I got a question, just to clean this up. The dedication of the thirty-two-foot right-of-way, does that need to be included here?
Les, you want me to explain it now, or you got? So, so. As, as, as illustration of our innocence, we prepared two possible ordinances for you tonight that were contained in your packet. One ordinance approves the Planning Commission's recommendation of disapproval. The other ordinance overrides the Planning Commission and authorizes the rezoning. I believe the mayor's pointing out that if you were to adopt that ordinance, and an ordinance here is required because you can't change the zoning without one. I believe the mayor is pointing out that as a condition of that rezoning, there would be a right-of-way dedication in lieu of plating. That condition is contained in the overriding ordinance that was drafted. So, if, if, and, and Les is either going to nod or shake his head at me in a minute. But if you want to accept and Mr. Nelson's motion as seconded, I understand it to be a motion to adopt the second ordinance which overrides.
I wanted to make sure the language was.
Planning Commission. But, 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 but the point is that he is adding just simply a second condition to section one, that, that an overlay be added. But, but now Les is going to.
Right, that has to be part of the ordinance.
The over.
It's not, it's not a condition, it's a change in zoning district and a protective overlay.
Okay, so the protective overlay would be an additional section we would have to add to the ordinance. It is not a condition, it is a protective overlay, so that section would have to be added to the ordinance if you wanted to dispense this. The answer to your question, Mr. Mayor, is the right-of-way dedication is in the ordinance, so assuming that Councilmember Nelson intended to adopt that ordinance, it's contained therein.
I don't know if he did or he didn't, I'm just asking if he wanted to amend it to include that, or if he was reading off a prepared ordinance, which I don't believe you were.
I don't, I don't have that, I should have it somewhere, but.
It's in the packet, it's like the second, if you go hit the.
Well, let me just say, I, I concur with your statement. Number one, to reconsider the Planning Commission's recommendation to approve the zoning application. I also want to impose the protective overlay as we indicated, and to the extent that we need to include the thirty-two-foot right-of-way, I certainly want to include that as well.
Are you amending your motion to include that?
I will so amend.
Or would you be willing to amend your second?
I will.
Okay, so to clarify, C.R.'s motion. He made a motion to override the Planning Comi- Planning Commission's recommendation to disapprove, and approve the change of zoning district classification from the present R1, single-family residential to R3, multifamily residential district, district, excuse me, on the property at 610 South Ruth, with the condition that the, an overlay be placed on the property that limits it to two dwelling units. And, and I don't have this ordinance in front of me either, and that a dedication be made before the ordinance is published for an additional thirty-two-foot half-street right-of-way in lieu of plating. Based on, I think you mentioned specifically number seventeen, you felt they were in error as, as a supporting factor in your motion to override.
That is correct.
Is that clean enough? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. I need some clarification here, so you're telling me it doesn't take a supermajority to override? And why is that? Because it went back to the Planning Commission, and now it's back to us?
Correct, when it's returned to the council, any action is by a simple majority only.
Needs to be modified. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, further questions? I want to be clear about this. When we're changing this to R3, we have not changed an entire neighborhood, we're talking about this particular property only, correct? And we've put the overlay on that restricts it to a single duplex.
Do you really believe that?
Yes.
We can't say anything, I know, that beats anything I ever seen, have a public deal, and nobody can say anything. If you really believe that, come on, would you like it out in front of your house?
Sheriff, I understand your frustration, but you can't just spout out from, from the audience, nobody else can hear you, nobody on the tape can hear you. You've had three public hearings to get your point across.
And we want two of them, two of the three, combined to nothing.
I understand, I understand, but you've had your chance to speak, we've read the minutes, we've listened to the tapes, we saw you and heard you last time. So, but that's enough, you know, I understand, but we're not going to have you just shout out from the gallery. I'm limited in the conversation to the bench here, what are you discussing over there? Did you get your question answered?
I, I think you were saying yes, is that correct? That we're talking about this piece of, we're not changing the zoning for an entire neighborhood, we're changing the zoning for this particular piece of property. Okay.
Further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oppose.
Motion carries, five to one. We'll move on to item number ten, which is the International Building Code. Who's leading this discussion, Steve, are you doing this?
Steve Anderson, City Engineer and Building Official, thank you for the chance to present this. This is a lengthy ordinance, but fairly straightforward in terms of what it does. It adopts the 2012 International Building Code, prepared by the International Code Council, with substantial amendments. Excuse me, these amendments generally follow those of M, A, B, C, D, with few exceptions. On the technical side, we have another section for administrative amendments that are tailored more to House City of Andover's business. This is a commercial code, so it doesn't apply to any residential structure, single-family duplex or townhome. So it would apply to architects, engineers, and those contractors that build commercial buildings in Andover. It will be effective ninety days after publication, assuming you approve it. We have vetted this online and through communication with builders that are licensed here with WABA, with architects and engineers. And I would like to thank Councilman Warrington for detailed input on the roofing chapter, appreciate that. So at that, I'll take any questions you might have at this time.
It's a pleasure, Council. Questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Troy.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance adopting the 2012 International Building Code and authorize the mayor to sign as presented.
Second.
Motion by Troy, second by Brian, to approve the ordinance adopting the 2012 IBC and authorize myself to sign. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Steve? Item eleven, if our space needs evaluation.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity. We came to you to release an RFQ a couple of meetings ago, we released the RFQ, had an extensive application interview process. We came down to two finalists, and we were able to reach an agreement with GLMV from, in Wichita here. And the RFQ is included in your packet. The goal of this is for them to come back with three options to figure out, to give us an idea of, a better idea of what we need to do to help out. And we're going to be looking at multiple buildings to make sure that we make the right decision. The total contract was twenty-two-two-fifty, they had reimbursables. I don't expect needing much of that, but I'm asking for twenty percent contingent, just in case, that's twenty-six-seven-hundred not to exceed for the contract. Certainly happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to authorize the contract with GLMV for architectural services in an amount not to exceed twenty-six thousand seven hundred dollars.
Second.
Motion by C.R., second by Greve, to approve the contract with GLMV, and a not-to-exceed number of twenty-six thousand seven hundred dollars. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number twelve, 2019 Proposed IT Budget Highlights.
Good evening, Craig Brown. Thought we'd cover, uh, there we go. Real quick, basically, the budget for nineteen is about one-point-three percent over what we have for eighteen. There are some shifts in the numbers, the main focus of that is, as my assistant Cindy Barrett has gone halftime, we have engaged some vendors to do some additional support to make up that difference, rather than trying to restaff that, so we've shifted those around. We have implemented Wi-Fi in the park, and that was an unbudgeted item this year, and we're just making do as we can. But we have worked that into, half of that into the IT budget right now as part of the general fund, and the other half coming from amphitheater. And the big-ticket item that I've still got to look at for next year will be the phone system. So I'd like to move on and talk about that in just a minute here. Real quick summary, when we started this journey in 2015, I came in and identified a number of areas that needed some attention and work, and we have been working through those, we've refreshed the PCs, we've built up the city network, we have reworked Wi-Fi, and now we've even added Wi-Fi in the park, we've gotten new servers in. When we talk about the web and the homepage, I've lumped in the audio/video system with that, and that turned out to be in worse condition than the original assessment, but we've been addressing that over time. And then printer, in the peripherals area, we've got like the printers we've been doing here, and so we've been working through all that. What that leaves us with is, in the current situation, we've got much more of the green stoplight areas on this. As I mentioned, we've still got some work to do on the servers, the hardware is in, but we haven't fully rolled everything to that. The audio/video, I've got initial discussions going on that we'd like to upgrade the video part of this room. We worked on the sound system last year and got that upgraded, but we'd need to finish out and get that taken care of so we can get some of this aging equipment out of there that is starting to show some age and failures. And then, the phones comes up. Basically, we've got a phone system that's been in for about eight years. In IT terms, that is ancient antique history. We did a renewal three years ago to carry that on. The system itself is sound, but we're running into some, some issues with aging hardware at this point. So we are due to renew that into this year, early next year. Kind of the options I'm looking at as we go through this evaluation is do nothing, which is really not an option. Like I said, we've got some failures going on, we're going to have to do something. One of those options would be to rip and replace, would be take out the existing phone system, bring in a phone system by another vendor and replace that. I've been talking to several companies, only one of them has given me any feedback so far. The system that Newton used, the All Works, looks like they've got, and these are not, excuse me, these are not firm bids, these are just estimates based on preliminary discussions.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
When you're talking about the phones, are you talking about the phones everywhere? Here, the, the police station, the fire station, the street shop, the?
These are all city facilities.
All city facilities, okay.
Everything is covered with this. Like I said, we've got the one bid in, but we have not been able to validate it. I think there are some loose items, so it's actually going to be a little over that, but we haven't worked out any details. We've also been talking to our existing vendor, who said, to get there, we've got to do some upgrades, and a lot of the basic components are in place, we just need to do some updates and upgrades. And that looks like a fairly cost-effective approach to doing this. So that's what I'm looking at right now. What I'm proposing is my approach to all of this, is that I'm hoping you will approve the full CIP we've requested so that we don't have any doubt about whether we can actually get the job done right. I don't expect to uncover anything unknown that'll actually push us to that number, but I, I just feel like that's a prudent approach to have that money there to work with. From there, we work with a team of the key users to make sure that we understand how we're using the phone systems, what features we need to keep and make those, sure those go forward, if there's any new features that we work those in. And with that group of individuals, then we'll down-select and provide a proposal around the end of the year, first of next year, to do the final upgrade. So, total, that is what my budget looks like, like I said, we're about a one-point-three percent increase overall. The big-ticket item, the last one on my stoplight chart to get an initial round of upgrades, is the phone system.
For clarity, you're requesting a hundred thousand dollars for the phone system, right?
The original.
But you will bring us back a firm proposal for our approval?
Yes, sir.
Because you have a pretty exciting option there, it looks like it's a little under half the price of that, to upgrade some other stuff and use the existing system, is that right?
This is a quick pass by a vendor without actually coming onsite and doing that, it's just based on his knowledge of what we've got. We haven't made sure that we've got all of the components that he doesn't include in that, like there may be, say, fax server or something that is not part of his system, that still needs to be addressed with this, and I need to get a total package together, but yes, it, it looks like it's going to be significantly under the top dollar. The top, the dollars we've picked are based more on what the original phone system cost to put in, and just repeating that effort than actual bidding at this point.
Well, this is in your CIP anyways, so, uh, we can, that's a, that's a moving number for a lot of CIP lists in this, in the City of Andover, so. for a lot of CIP lists in this, in the City of Andover, so. Council, have any questions?
Thank you.
Um, I guess we're down to member items, eh? So is it, is it, it's, this storm backbilled over Andover. Is it hailing, raining, what's, uh, storming?
It's hailing.
Walked back there, it was hailing. And I think it's still hailing. It wasn't quite big, but since we can still hear.
Well, that's music to your ears, huh?
It was just the rain.
It's actually not right now.
As long as it's not that golf ball size they had in El Dorado.
I just got a warning on my phone, a tornado warning north of El Dorado.
Yeah, that's, that, that was the risk.
Russell indicated there is a wall cloud at Greenwich in two fifty-four.
All right, see if your member items done.
I would like to wish everybody a safe Fourth of July. That's it.
Carolyn?
Um, I, I'll, I'll go fast, but I meet with the Historical Society from time to time, and I have been meaning to share this with you all, and I'll just, they're working at making improvements all the time and continue to hope for and ask for volunteers or people that would like to contribute money. But one of the things they have is bricks, where residents buy a brick and have your name engraved on the brick, and they have redone all that, and they have moved that outside by the Gilmore House. And right now, I think the mayor and I both have bricks with our names on them, and they wanted to give every other council member an opportunity. So I just wanna.
There you go.
Pass these down to anybody else who, who would like to take part in that and get a brick. And, uh, they've got another one here if there's any staff member that would like to. But it is pretty cool. It's all outside around the Gilmore House now, and they're working on that. So, that's all.
Troy?
Meritress Credit Union is back.
Right.
Yeah, they had a ribbon cutting. And by the way, it was dedicated to Byron Stout, which was pretty emotional. It's very great. That's all I got tonight.
CR?
Yes, I would like to apologize to Susan and, and JT. I, I have since found the ordinance that I wished I would have read. It's very clear and clean and a heck of a lot better than anything I said, but I, I didn't find it in time, but, and I should have, and I apologize. That's it.
We get to, we get to use that clean one, right?
Your amended motion was just great.
That, that's it.
Everybody have a safe Fourth of July.
Same. I'm good. Staff, have anything else?
I just want to remind Council, I think we've sometimes had confusion over the calendar. Our next meeting is July tenth, and then the meeting after that is the twenty-fourth, with the workshop being on the twenty-third.
No, I don't think so. I think that was my mistake. Why would we have changed that one?
We did.
I don't remember.
I don't think so.
I don't either. I think it was my mistake on the calendar, but I will ma, I'll make absolutely sure that tomorrow instead of.
We need to know what exactly we approved.
July ten is a clean date though, right?
Right.
Yes, that is for sure, but somebody pointed that out.
It should be the ten and the thirty-first.
I think it is.
But.
The thirtieth?
Thirty-first.
Look, I'll just say, I'm in my vacation based on that calendar.
Oh, you have, you have assistant city administrator?
Yeah.
Sitting right there.
That's true.
What's the problem?
We won't hold that against you.
You might want to extend the meeting a little bit.
Rainy real hard?
It's raining.
Okay, would you pull my car a little closer to the door?
I guess I'm, I get a hard drive.
I don't mind the rain, but is hail still included in that?
I gotta go anyway, so, um, let's, let's get out of here.
A motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Yeah, motion by Troy, second by CR. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.
Anybody else want a opportunity to buy a brick?
What's it do?
Um, they'll, they'll take it anytime. You can just mail it. Don't they have an?